But write it down because I'm sure they're going to revise it.
It'll be warmer.
I believe.
Well, that could be a first.
No video? Okay, our video up here isn't on. I don't know. We can get started. So yeah, just a little bit. It looks like the microphones are on and no video in the front, but it's on behind us. So welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is citizen input. Is there anyone in the room? Anyone online? There is somebody online. You're welcome. Just thanks for joining us for citizen input online today. Please proceed. Thank you.
Hi, Doreen Ty. Good morning, Commissioners. Trying to follow changes on Deschutes County airport is incredibly difficult. It appears to me this is intentional and I'm not, and I'm questioning the intent and integrity. And Deschutes listed prominent projects. You have Housing Mill, Dear Sisters Trails, Tumalo, two wildfire items in, I don't even know how to say it. Ironic that increased airport activity runs high risk of adverse effects to all, but one of these, yet airports aren't listed significant and prominent projects? Not a single airport reference? These airports sustainability substantially reduce livability and increase pollution by no small margin. Again, want to remind you that aviation air pollution is directly correlated to hypertension, cognitive decline, IQ loss, brain injury, vascular damage, renal injury, fatal heart attacks, and overall all cause morbidity and mortality. I think the PR campaigns when these private businesses want more public land money or amenities, but subvert public process and education at such a high cost is enraging. The facts regarding community costs versus private industry accommodation and convenience is lost while you continue to tie our community to 20-year FAA grant assurances. You could be gone next year, but our community is subject to uphold 20 years of FAA grant assurances. These grants are applied for an issue without adequately informing the public of economic and environmental impacts. This is unethical and improper use of public resources. Can any of you say how many hawks, eagles, songbirds, flycatchers, waterfowl, upland birds, and falcons have been killed in cold? Or if the bird detection systems go off when they surf our trees permitting an ever wider take permit? What about where flight paths are set over farms? These farms without raptors get overrun with vermin. We're rooted inside. A total lack of forethought or protection. That municipal airport, there's two other airports known and buffered for this type of growth, but it's too much even there. Oregon's community colleges are not showing positive retention or finance, yet the colleges are a large portion of these private flight schools' clients. To allow people's lives and healths to be shattered for these for-profit private businesses, finance through numerous forms of public money is not only immoral, it's not in alignment with what Central Oregonians have said is important to them or the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments. These aviation businesses have no right to pollute air or land that is not theirs, and it's morally bankrupt to abandon our constitution and citizens, to fight for their lives while suffering the brain-altering impacts of these excessive pollutants while ever-expanding and increasing impacts. Please, please do a little better with the community when it comes to these airports. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony today. Is there anyone else online for public input? Okay. Seeing none, next item is consent agenda. So there's one item here. Joseph Stapleton, part of the Cannabis Advisory Panel, and.
We need to pull this item and modify it.
Is that what we have? Okay, sure.
Yeah, so this item will be pulled for discussion.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the Record Eric Crop Deputy County Administrator. Yes, we asked this item be pulled from consent. Joe had not been able to attend the meetings. We contacted him several, or tried to contact him several times to get a status update. We weren't able to, so we put this on the agenda. Since then, we did hear from him, and over the weekend, we got an email from him where he is resigning from the committee. He had some family business out of state and has not been able to attend the meetings. So the staff recommendation is to amend the letter to thank him for his service rather than removing him since he has resigned.
Okay, so yeah, we were going to send a letter saying we've determined that you're not a valid member, but now we're saying thank you for your service. So it'll be a slightly different letter. I did attend the Marijuana Advisory Committee Monday night, and it was acknowledged there also, the fact that this seat will be available and there'll be an appointment process following.
That's correct. And actually, there's a, excuse me, there's a second seat available as well. The Water Master, can't remember his name right now, but he, yes, Kyle Gorman has retired. So we are in contact with his replacement, and we'll talk to the board about appointing Kyle's replacement on the committee because that slot is designated for the Water Master. It's a very narrow focus of that. So we'll come back to the board on both of those appointments.
Eric, can that be a designee of the Water Master, or does it have to be the Water Master themselves?
I'd have to read the legislation. We can check into that.
It's, uh, people have tried to make water into a bigger consideration than it actually is, you know? When grown, you know, when grown legally, you know, in a licensed production facility, cannabis production is not a very water-intensive crop. When grown illegally, you're basically stealing water, just like anyone would be stealing water for any crop, and that should be, that should be shut down and prosecuted or punished. But we don't need the Water Master himself to kind of represent that perspective. I mean, stealing water is stealing water, whether you're growing cannabis or anything else with it.
Yeah. There'll be a follow-on process. We'll have that discussion. So for today, is there a motion for?
So move that we modify the letter.
So sending a letter of thank you for your service to Joseph Stapleton. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two, Consideration of Document for Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Lepine for Law Enforcement Services.
Good morning.
Good morning. William Bailey, Patrol Captain for the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office.
And Joe Brandage, Business Manager for the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office.
Just introduce us to the topic, please.
Sure. As you know, City of Sisters and City of Lepine are the fastest-growing communities in Deschutes County. We, in the last couple of years, have entered into an enhanced service contract with the City of Sisters, which involves a lieutenant and currently three deputies. That project or that contract has worked so well, they're looking at adding a fourth, and the City of Sisters loves that. And so City of Lepine has reached out to us and asked for a similar service, and so we've mimicked the Sisters' contract to enter into a City of Lepine service contract. We actually put the lieutenant in place at the beginning of 2022, and they want a lieutenant and one full-time dedicated deputy to provide law enforcement service to the City of Lepine. And we're ready to move forward, sign that contract, and hopefully have the deputy in place by July 1st.
I know that the City of Lepine properties all have a line item on there for Rural Patrol also, so there's resources coming by the tax bills for each property being developed or each property on the books there. So this really will augment those services, and I do appreciate enforcing the city codes and ordinances and making a presence, patrolling the neighborhoods, because it's going to be more dense there, obviously. So it is a different style of patrol relative to rural Patrol of deputies. So it's, yeah, it looks like it's all been negotiated out, and we're just acknowledging it here at this level.
And Commissioner, what you said about augmenting, that is one difference between the contract with the City of Sisters and with Lepine. The City of Sisters, we've removed the rural property tax line, and the city is charging that and then kind of passing it on. With Lepine, they're going to continue to pay that property tax. This just adds on some focused work that we're doing.
It's just a function of when the city incorporated. That line was already there for rural residents, and it was an incorporated area dozen years ago. So now this is just augmenting those services.
Sorry, let me see if I'm tracking this correctly. So in Lepine, there, people are still paying the Rural District Two, as well as the Countywide District One, and the City of Lepine is adding additional funds beyond that. Okay. And then this is all about what is happening inside Lepine. There's still Rural Patrol happening outside of Lepine, and those, I'm guessing those deputies are available to respond if there's something happening inside Lepine?
Absolutely, absolutely. We will not change our patrol services south of Lavabute and the Sun River and Lepine community. This is just an enhancement to where they have a dedicated deputy to respond to calls and be that community liaison within the City of Lepine.
And how does this differ, or, you know, I know that, you know, for example, Sun River has their own police department, but besides that, like, how does this differ in terms of, if coverage that people would get inside the City of Lepine?
So we obviously operate 24 hours a day. We have two to three dedicated deputies plus a supervisor working south of Lavabute in that area. Those patrols are going to remain the same. This is just going to be an enhancement to have an additional person focused in the city. What we know is with our rotating shifts and 24-hour coverage, the community wants a dedicated person, the City of Lepine wants a dedicated person. Do they know who their point of contact is? And to be able to follow up during the business hours, to be at community events, to be that dedicated face and representative for the Sheriff's Office. And so that's what this role would be, the lieutenant and the deputy, being that dedicated Monday through Friday face of the Sheriff's Office, their community representative, and being able to respond to calls in addition to what our normal patrol services are offering.
Great, thank you.
And a relationship with the city manager and the city council, the Park District, you know, the Fire District is a larger area, but really having that next level of service in an incorporated area. So we saw it at the crab feed. There was quite a presence, and it was a great relationship seeing everybody there also.
So Captain Bailey, how many people did you say are working in South Lavabute?
Yeah, so at any given time, we have two to three deputy sheriffs plus a sergeant or supervisor working in the Lepine unincorporated area, Sun River, south Lavabute.
Is there a motion?
So move approval of board signature of document number 2023-343 and intergovernmental agreement with the City of Lepine for provision of law enforcement services.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number three, Request for Board Signature for Amendment Number Four to the Community Mental Health Provider Agreement with Pacific Source. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Janice Garceau, Director of Health Services.
Holly Harris, Behavioral Health Director.
And we are here this morning to request board signature of document number 2023-327, which is Amendment Number Four to the Community Health Provider Agreement with Pacific Source. That is amending the agreement noted as 2021-323. This amendment, Number Four, provides just an updated attachment G and H, which is effective January 1, 2023, and that details the community mental health provider fee for service and monthly capitation rates, as well as the metrics for contract performance. The estimated new contract will bring in roughly $16,800,000 for calendar year 2023, which is an increase from the amount last year of $12,500,000 for calendar year 2022. This is a significant increase this year and is largely the result of the OHA Medicaid-directed increased payment for behavioral health services of 30% across the board, and specifically in our region, increased all rates, the capitation amount, the PMPM for our stabilization center, and our fee-for-service rates, roughly 30%. That's pretty much the size of it.
Janice, this is for Central Oregon, is it not? Is it just for Deschutes County?
This is for Deschutes County, and then the, yes, the contract covers Central Oregon, but these particular terms are the terms with the Deschutes County CMHP. And we do serve a small portion of Northern Klamath County, so those members are included in the members capitated to Deschutes County and covered by this contract.
So it's just that teeny bit of Gilchrist, et cetera?
The world of funding for health services is extremely complicated.
Yes.
Like, I want to check if I'm understanding correctly here. So this is the primary pathway for Medicaid dollars to flow to these services?
It is, it probably is the primary way that Medicaid dollars flow to these services. Medicaid dollars are also represented in some of our federal grants, so some of those are supported by Medicaid dollars. Medicaid dollars are also represented in some of our county financial assistance awards service element lines of funding. So the state sometimes funds additional projects or efforts through the CFAA, and those contracts include state general funds, other funds, and on occasion Medicaid dollars. But this is probably the largest tranche, and Cheryl can correct me if I'm not accurate.
She's nodding yes.
She's nodding yes, yeah. This is the largest tranche of funding.
And can you kind of review some of this history for me of why Medicaid dollars flow through this particular pathway instead of some other way to us? I mean, my understanding is that the Health Council is in part about kind of improving preventive care and, you know, reducing, you know, cost containment. But, you know, before we had a, you know, a CCO, what did we do before that?
Before we had.
Why are we doing it this way now?
So I'm, I am maybe not the most expert on this, since I came into this state doing this work after CCOs were formed, but my general understanding is that prior to CCOs, there were, there was AMH, and AMH stood for?
I knew you were going to ask me that.
Mental health.
Something mental health, yes. And dollars were flowing sort of more directly through the Health Authority or through, I think, DHS at the time, frankly, because that may have been before the formation of the Health Authority, to community mental health programs, and the structure of the local mental health authority was in place at that time. The state made the decision to pass Medicaid dollars through contracts with CCOs because they felt that HMOs might do a better job managing the Medicaid resource and containing costs while at the same time ensuring health outcomes for the community. The Health Council really is a separate entity. It's a governing board that oversees lots of things related to the Oregon health plan population and health in general, but isn't necessarily directly involved, although they sit at the table during the contract negotiations, but they have a broader role. So these are direct fiscal contracts for the Medicaid spend to provide the services that are outlined as required, both in the relationship the state has with the local mental health authority and the CCOs. It is complicated. It probably is due for review and simplification, but that's kind of how it works.
So when I mention the Health Council, that's separate. This is money flowing through the CCO?
Correct.
For the purposes that you mentioned, HMOs, cost containment.
And ensuring mandated services. And it doesn't just come to Deschutes County, the CMHP. The CCO has contracts with nonprofits that provide mental health and healthcare services with primary care, with the hospital, et cetera, and we negotiate this contract together. Some of the larger entities that are responsible for health in the community negotiate the contract terms together.
So capacity-wise, this is good. I mean, it's adding a couple million dollars in this, I don't know, biennial, I guess, but.
It's the calendar.
Yeah, relative to, yeah, whichever calendar we're looking at, yeah.
Yeah. So it's a million dollars, a little over a million a month more, that the increase is?
The increase, a million a month more, it's roughly $4 million this year, so I guess that's.
Oh, you're saying that the increase is not the 12 million, that's what we got last year?
Yes.
12 million to 16, so 2 million, 300.
And where will these dollars go? What, you know, what programs or services are, you know, are these dollars kind of targeted towards?
So these dollars are targeted to, they go to almost everything that we do that is eligible for a Medicaid claim. They also, some small part of the dollars go to some of the non-billable services that we provide. I'm sorry, this is so kind of complicated, but we provide a lot of services to the community, like representation on boards, helping with student threat assessment, helping with training law enforcement in responding to people with mental illness, helping with critical incidents, stress management, debriefs in the community. These are all things that we can't bill for, but they're a service that really the community mental health program provides. So that's one small tranche of the per-member-per-month rate that we receive. Then we get lots of either per-member-per-month dollars where we submit claims to account for how we've used those dollars, both billable and non-billable claims. And then we have fee-for-service revenue, which is a direct relationship. You provide a service, you bill the service, and you're paid the Medicaid reimbursement rate. The reality of these dollars is that because of how our CCBHC arrangement works, which remember is a, the simplest way to describe it is we have a cost. Medicaid gets to you to about here, $8 to the $10 cost. CCBHC comes in then and calculates your true cost and pays the difference. So when our contract goes up, our ability to claim the PPS rate goes down. So we come out, it's basically a wash. So this is not actually going to expand services in our case because of our arrangement as a CCBHC, but it does help us not be in a negative revenue situation.
So we will get less CCBHC funds?
We will have a more difficult time drawing down the match, which frankly is the right thing, because the match is intended to make up the difference between your cost and your revenue, Medicaid revenue. And if you're meeting your cost with your Medicaid revenue, then you ostensibly shouldn't need those matched dollars. So it's a way to be responsible for those dollars. The problem we're having right now is that that formula has not been rebased in five years. They're rebasing it this year, so it hasn't kept pace with cost. So it's, the formula's based on what we cost five years ago. So they are rebasing. We do anticipate that that may give us the opportunity to generate some additional revenue, because the reality is that this contract also does not cover the full cost of the provision of services.
And so when we are, when we provide billable Medicaid services, we're actually drawing directly from this, from these funds?
In two ways. One is like submitting a receipt. I gave you $10, and you're submitting receipts that show that you're billing towards that total. And the other is a direct, I give you a bill and you pay me an amount, and that's fee for service. So that's how it works. Really roughly described, but.
Cheryl was still nodding yes. That's a good sign, yeah.
I think she's saying she's proud of her students.
Oh, there you go, proud of the students. Yeah, a lot of moving parts here. It's good to have these resources available. And yeah, I understand a little bit about the. the, the, yeah, the proportion is what we kind of learned about, you know, this really isn't adding a lot of capacity. It is changing, it's kind of dialing in the, the base reimbursement, it sounds like.
Yeah. I mean, it's a true investment. It does make a difference. We're still always playing catch up, but less catch up this year than maybe in other years.
So Janice, we were listening, when we were at the meeting in Madras the other day-
Yeah.
And they were talking about how Jefferson County is at the bottom of this state compared in our health assessments. And I'm wondering, if someone from Jefferson County came here to use our public health, are they allowed to use it?
Yes, well, yes. So we often serve people from outside the county. It's a small number because generally speaking, we refer people to use their county resources. But one example would be our crisis services. They gave us their very small amount and we helped support crisis services for the whole region. Another example would be our really robust partnerships in public health with Jefferson County. So where they've had a lack of capacity, we've sent providers there, we've had agreements with them to help provide some support to that community.
I know the epidemiologist did a report for them and they really appreciated him.
Yeah, yeah. So we do as much as we can to share. And, you know, the good news is Best Care has become a CCBHC in Jefferson County. It is hoped that that will begin to really start to make a difference in that community and that the health outcomes will improve. I think Mosaic Medical in St. Charles has done some investing in expanding services in Jefferson County. So as those things come online, I hope we start to see some real differences in how that community is faring.
With their Best Care location, you can't miss it when you're driving down the street in Madras.
Right, right. And they were party to this contract as well and also received a 30% increase in resources. So that, that, that investment is regional, not just ours.
I was hoping you'd have some good words.
Yeah.
News for the, for the entire community.
Right.
And to go back to the original question, like if someone shows up at the stabilization center from Prineville or from Madras-
We serve them.
Absolutely serve them, yes. Well, that was always the, remember when we gave the CCBA, the original funding, what wasn't it like 500,000 or something? That was the, the whole story, was it's for the entire community. And what was it, 3% I think were coming from Creek County?
Yeah, I think that's about, been about steady.
Yeah.
Haven't looked at it this week, but it, yeah, it was, it's been around 3%.
Anyway, that's-
And 1% from Jefferson County.
One, I know.
We are seeing them show up in our data at least. I mean, it's just a more of a drive, but, but we definitely are here to serve them.
A foray for a motion.
Yep.
I'll move board signature of document number 2023-327, amendment number four, to the Community Mental Health Provider Agreement with Pacific Source.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare and Chair will vote yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Stay to stay.
And Holly can stay here for the next one. So item number four, acceptance of OHA grant to provide behavioral health workforce incentives.
Yes, Holly Harris, Behavioral Health Director still. So here to request that the board move approval of chair signature of document number 2023-377, accepting a grant from the Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Health Workforce Incentives. So as you probably remember, we were back here, gosh, it's been a couple of months ago now, requesting approval to apply for this grant. And so some of the areas of focus, this is all around workforce incentives to how to increase retention and recruitment of our workforce. So some of the, they had specific categories for this grant that we could ask for dollars in, and so some of them were related to rural locations, specifically our South County location. In our application, we had, you know, this was months ago before we had some of the things that we have in place now in South County for staffing incentives. So I think our hope is now to shift what we had originally asked for in this application to pay for those differentials that have been approved for South County clinicians out there that are based out there. And so that will help cover those costs, which is, which is great. Other, other things that we have applied for and received funding for is to increase part-time opportunities because that is something we hear from staff regularly, especially new moms, you know, who are wanting to maybe come back, but only on a part-time basis. So this would allow us to support a few positions like that when appropriate. Tuition assistance, bonuses and stipends for supervision of interns. Supervising interns is a great way to grow your own workforce, but it's a huge lift for clinicians with really big caseloads and huge, huge volumes of work. So being able to provide incentives for that would be really great. And then we can also use it for clinical supervision stipends, which is, was actually already approved a while back, so this will help pay for those costs associated.
Just kind of follow up to the commitments we made with dollars coming back through the Oregon Health Authority. Great, any other questions or discussion?
So the 125,000 that's allocated for the tuition reimbursement, how long do you project that that will be there before those funds will be all used? I mean, is, is that enough?
Prob, I mean, we can always use more because tuition is expensive, as you know.
Right, it's expensive, and don't we want more people that are, to have the licensing that takes, it just, you know, just do it in three weeks, it takes a couple of years?
Correct. So we have, these funds are available until June of 2024, so not a long amount of time. So I think they'll be, I think that amount will probably be appropriate for that length of time and probably not be used for something that took multiple years.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Let's see, I move approval of chair signature of document number 2023-377, accepting a grant from Oregon Health Authority for Behavioral Health Workforce Incentives.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, go ahead.
I do have a question. I, I'm, I'd love to understand a little bit better how that housing and relocation assistance or supports, you know, like kind of mechanically how that works. I mean, is it added to your paycheck or is it something that, you know, you, you make an arrangements directly with a, with a landlord or, or?
So when we had to write this, we had to write it before getting all of the details worked out. And so I think initially before we had the stipend available for us, for our South County location, we were thinking of ways to incentivize staff who both lived and worked in South County. That was our hope. I think with this differential now in place, we'll probably shift away from that because the mechanics of it are very complicated. Having worked with our Human Resources Department and Legal Department, that, that may not be as viable an option. Relocation packages certainly still are a viable option. We have precedents of those in the past, so we could still potentially use them for that purpose. But I think our primary focus is to support the differentials that were just added with these dollars to incentivize those staff working out there.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Little bit ahead of schedule, but item number five, revision to Homeless Solutions Partnership with the City of Bend. Want to make sure everybody's available for this.
Morning.
Morning, hello.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll just provide a brief introduction here. So as you know, the Board of Commissioners had awarded $1.5 million in ARPA funds to the City of Bend for the Houseless Partnership Solution, Houseless Solutions Partnership. And today we have with us the City of Bend who are requesting a slight revision to that contract. So with us, we have Amy Fraley, the Senior Program Manager of Houselessness Services with City of Bend, and I believe Lynn McConnell, the Director of Housing Department.
Lynn is not here.
Oh, okay, she's not on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm Russ Grace, the Chief Operating Officer for the city.
This is not Lynn, so we had a slight, a slight switch.
Sorry, I saw someone up on Zoom. Must not be.
I think it's me.
Oh, okay. I'll let you take it.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and-
Do you have a presentation?
Yes. Thank you.
Our screens aren't working so-
Oh, okay.
We may be looking over our shoulder today.
Um, I also brought hard copies of-
Yeah, if you have.
Okay. You guys, I bring all the paper.
That would be lovely because when they say your dog ate the homework?
Yeah.
No, my puppy got into my bag. He had a ball.
Yeah.
He did. There we go, they're not stapled, so I apologize.
No, that's great.
Oh, okay, cool.
Isn't that good? He's really into corners.
Got so many papers.
I'll hold it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please take it in.
Also included in that packet is the Navigation Center report that I had also brought the last time I appeared, for your appearance. And if you'd like me to start, I can, or I can wait till those are do-
Just one moment, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much for coming. We're glad that we're now into spring or maybe summer outside.
Yep, there it is.
My hands are so chilly.
It was snowing about.
I know, we saw it.
We're into our sixth month of winter.
Yes.
When the sun's out, it's warm though, so it's, you can feel it coming, you can feel it coming.
Take it, take whatever we can get.
The days are long.
Okay, we're all set.
All right. So we are here today to discuss the Homeless Solution Partnership Grant Agreement, which was executed in November of 2022, and it represents a $1.5 million commitment to address houselessness between the city and the county. Initially, the funding was intended for two outdoor shelters, but per the agreement, the funds may be utilized for other sheltering purposes should the second site net come to fruition. So the city is respectfully requesting $750,000 towards the operation of the Rainbow Motel or the Franklin Avenue Shelter. We've also applied for funds from the Governor's Office through the Matt Group and CYC. We're unsure if we'll receive that allocation, but we are optimistic. I know Commissioner Bone had a couple of questions about COV in the last meeting in the process, so I want to-
About what?
About Central Oregon Villages.
Okay.
And the timeline for their outdoor shelter.
Acronyms just give.
Sorry.
No problem.
And this is a location on Bear Creek in 27. This is the one site that we have moving forward currently. And we did a very robust phase one contract, and that was to engage the public. Central Oregon Villages went door to door, more than 200 households, went to the Larkspur Community Association, Neighborhood Association multiple times, and also had an open house and roundtable. And based on the feedback from the community, they applied some changes to their initial scope, which included adjusting the hybrid requirements. It also, the conditions of placement were affected, they added security staffing to their budget, they changed the fencing from chain link, the neighbors were not in favor of chain link, they wanted something more aesthetically pleasing, and they reduced the overall site size and its footprint. So we moved forward in October with an amendment, which includes up to 20 pallet shelters prioritizing women and children. They will utilize coordinated entry in existing relationships, they'll receive food through family kitchen or through Neighbor Impact, and they'll have service from a mobile shower truck. We're expecting the first eight pallets to be available in May, and the others are coming as well.
So how small is the size then? How, how much did they reduce it?
They reduced it? Let me see, I actually have a map if you would like to see it.
Yeah, it was just-
Yeah, and if you're familiar with-
They were listening to the neighbors and this is what they came back with and-
It was reduced by at least a third.
Okay.
It had spanned, if anyone is familiar with that site, there's a pond and it was an old baseball field, and they had pushed it all the way over into the corner. And I'd be happy to send that along instead of scrolling through things.
Would there be any plans to ever put a access road there? I think it was a right of way, kind of at that pond up to the next block going north.
And so there is a hammerhead turnaround that Fire signed off on, so the access will come over from the north side.
But I mean, just the improvement of the, it looks like it was a right of way. There's a narrow strip there, and I think it's a right of way.
Coming behind like the Wilco, that will eventually, if redevelopment ever occurs on the church property, like full redevelopment occurs on the church property, that road will be extended through.
It could be a future road still, that's what's the question, okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Russ.
Yep.
So the second 750,000 that we're discussing today, we are requesting that you can sit-
So you're saying the seven, first 750 is, is Central Oregon Villages' effort at that location, is that?
That is correct. So there's a three-year contract, just short of 1.5 million. And it, it did cost about 350 to do site prep, and so that was a chunk.
So is, is 750 of that 1.5 million committed to this Central Oregon Villages' site?
It is committed through the grant agreement, 750 from both the city and 750 from the county.
For the Central Oregon Villages' effort?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just getting clear.
Yep, sorry.
It sounds like already expended.
Part of it, yes. Just to start at these. You had to do a lot of grading to make it ready. So with the Franklin Avenue Shelter, which is the former Rainbow, which is how everybody knows it, there are 50 non-congregate units, varying floor plans, with a plan to have at least 60 beds available. Anyone who's been in the Rainbow might know there are some very small rooms, and also there are some almost one-bedroom apartment style units that would be very suited for families. Currently, we do not have an option for families, and we do have minors at the Navigation Center in, in non-congregate shelter, which is not optimum under any circumstances. Our other option at this site and our intent is to have some medical respite beds, thereby doubling the capacity that we currently have in the community. There are four ADA units located in the newer building in the back. This facility would have 24-hour staffing, including the overnight security, case management, meal service, the family kitchen, and the cost we have for those 60 beds at this time would be $38.70. And it's very much supported by the surrounding community. The Central District Business Association has been an exceptional partner through the Good Neighbor Agreement and wants that site full.
So what did you say the bed cost was again?
$38.70, very rough to begin with, and that's based on 60-
Number eight, if you flip a few pages, it's on there.
And that, that business association and neighbor support, that includes Paulson Floor Coverings?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Wait.
I'm trying to remember all the signatories, but the, the entire board signed the Good Neighbor Agreement and has been very supportive. Neighbor Impact temporarily occupied that space when we were waiting for turnkey to be finished, and it was, it was a terrific relationship.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking it's possible that all three of us had in-depth discussions with Samir Dean from Paulson's Floor Coverings about, about all sorts of things in that, in the immediate vicinity there. So it's, it's good to know that they're, they're on board.
I believe so. I'm not sure they signed the agreement, but it did involve the entire business association. I'm not sure if they're on the board. But they also were very generous with the turnkey site and provided some flooring there and, and we're very grateful.
That's where the flooring came from.
Yep. We are recommending that Shepherd's House is the operator. They operate three shelters, including the Navigation Center. In the legislation that established navigation centers, there was the plan for eight and later nine. Our Navigation Center is one of four that is operating in the state. They have provided almost 30,000 nights of shelter in the first nine months, and I have also broken down the cost of overnight as well as day services. They have 26 partners that are coming into the facility. It's a true service hub, including Deschutes County Behavioral Health, Best Care, Family Kitchen and Mosaic. And they do have those reporting metrics in place that you may remember from the previous report, developing a stutter, the previous report, and I've just included, I know it's difficult to read, but just showing the number of bed nights there. They are well over capacity. It would be our-
Is there capacity at the Navigation Center? Because I read different things.
So the contract-
What do they license for?
100 to 110, depending on who you talk to.
Right, that's what I thought.
Fire says we can go up higher. Very often, we're up at 130 to 138 with the extended winter weather.
So this slide, all these bullet points are relative to the Navigation Center?
They are.
Okay.
They're an experienced provider, was our hope with this slide, to show that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and of course, I brought 500 pieces of paper.
So how much is the contract then with?
It, with Shepherd's House?
Yes.
It would depend on the Governor's money and whether we would have to expend those funds by January or if we could pay in advance. We built it, and I do have copies of that draft for, I believe it's just over 850,000, which breaks down that, that evening overnight amount of 38.70 with 60 beds. And again, that would be, that would be an average. Medical respite may cost more and have different providers that are coming in, but we're planning for a year at least, hopefully two, and 800, I think it's 74.
And that's a year?
A year, yes. But we may have to do it by January. It's a lot of unknown, but I would happy, be happy to come back and, and report as soon as we get a final number or a number at all.
So the Franklin, we're going to call it a Frank, what's the name of this?
Franklin Avenue Shelter.
Yeah, okay, I was, yeah.
I grew up in then.
So Franklin Avenue Shelter.
Yeah.
I know, exactly.
It'll always be the Rainbow.
What are we calling this? Is it redeveloped to a point where, does there need to be any other investments in the facility, I guess is the question?
No, the city has been working on the facility just with the turn from Neighbor Impact's use and- And it's an older motel, and so there are just some things that are a little bit-
Just regular maintenance, no big capital project. That's kinda my thought.
Yep. We might remove one wall, but the city would take care of that.
Yep, and just minor. And then, so this is gonna be available for four years, it talks about in the, in the memo?
The, the redevelopment plans, it could be available up to four years.
Up to four years, okay. Good to understand.
Maybe five.
And, and am I tracking correctly that this is kind of a better fit with the, the state dollars that are gonna come through the MAC than outdoor shelter?
This is a fit. It's new beds, and we own the buildings, so it does fall under the governor's only-for-new-beds definition. And so, we're, we're hopeful. And that being said, the rollout sometimes for those funds isn't as, as smooth as we would hope, and we would love to get those three minors out of the shelter as quickly as possible. Shepherd's House is ready to go, and the city will, will make it happen very, very quickly if we get the okay.
I'm hearing, though, that Bethlehem Inn in Bend even has a vacancy. A sig, a quarter of the facility was vacant as of April 4th. So, I'm wondering why are, why aren't our kids and families going over to the Bethlehem Inn?
I can't answer that question. My, it could be because it's low barrier. We've got low-barrier access at the Navigation Center. The Rainbow Motel will also be a low-barrier shelter. So, if they have pets or partnerships, sobriety will not be required. And sometimes that, that makes a difference.
So, people won't be required to be sober when they come in? What will be the, what will be the operating rules of the, of the facility?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, please?
So, sobriety won't be a requirement to, to get in, but what will be the operating rules of the facility?
There's no usage on facility grounds. And then, with the robust Good Neighbor Agreement that we had in place previously, we are very mindful of people actually being in the surrounding area as well. And so, we were able to avoid any kind of usage on neighbor property or, or anything like that too. So, that would be our plan. And with security and the support of staff, it's, it has not been an act of concern thus far. In non-congregate, sorry.
I'm still in the same spot where I've been for a couple of these topics. We have a coordinated homeless outreach office, and we don't have that person or that guidance at the table with us today. So, this is the city of Bend asked of the county, can we go spend these money in partnership? Fine, but what's the big picture? And I, I still don't understand why we keep just picking these things off one at a time in front of the Board of Commissioners without any bigger picture. As I say, it's not even for you. It's for the people that aren't in the room here at this time. And then also, is there any possibility of offering a facility like this, which is backing up, but for people that want to have a very low-cost opportunity to have somewhere to sleep and work? Because it sounds like, I mean, what, what kind of percentage do we think people are gonna be able to be functioning and working in a low-barrier shelter? You know, working adults?
I believe a third of the guests at the Navigation Center are currently employed. I know some of the barriers that they, they face are exactly what you're talking about. And then, it's, it's, they don't have laundry. So, you have folks that are working in restaurants that then don't have the ability to clean up their uniforms and, and those types of scenarios. I would suggest that the Rainbow Motel, the Franklin Avenue Shelter, would be an opportunity for Shepherd's House to provide some greater supports to those families and individuals that are employed, perhaps even giving them a place to sleep during the day if they're working in overnight, which I know is a challenge right now for a number of people that are trying to get themselves back on their-
I'm just pointing out that there's possibly a subset of people that could afford something.
Absolutely.
So, we're going out of our way to give away these things, and there's possibly a subset of people that are like, hey, 40 bucks a night, count me in. And it could be, you know, helping me out of a bad situation. So, yeah, I just don't see the, the spectrum of services. It's like we're always focused on low-barrier, full-service.
Absolutely. But the, the Navigation Center is actively transitioning people. I mean, every month into more permanent housing and transitional housing. We have some traction there where people then can go out and pay for a room. This is a facility that is empty, and the Navigation Center is serving far over their capacity.
Oh, yeah, no, there's big needs out there. I'm just saying, maybe there's a percentage of people that can afford something.
And with this one year, and, and perhaps maybe next year, that's something we could do, or in two years while we're still waiting on, on the facility. This is just an immediate need that we could fill very quickly.
You mentioned laundry, you know, a laundromat is a going concern, and some people know how to maintain and keep a facility like that going. So, there's a business opportunity there instead of giving it away once again. So, yeah, just ideas.
How long, kind of, what kind of a duration, kind of, limit will be set for people staying at the Franklin Avenue Shelter? I mean, will, will people be allowed to be there for extended periods of time? Or is it, I mean, you know, like Bethlehem Inn is, I believe, six weeks, something like that? There's a, there's a finite period of time that people are, are allowed to be there, and then, and then they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be moving on to, you know, more long-term housing, for example?
I believe it'll be six months. There is a population at the Navigation Center currently that is elderly and medically fragile. And so, my sense is those people may not have some more options, even whether it's employment. And, and so, I think it'll be an individual basis, based on their personal plan and based on the plan of their case manager. No one wants to, to be in a low-barrier shelter for an extended period of time. Even if there is comfort around that, unless we have other choices, it's not really a choice.
And I, I think it's also important just to also mention that we need additional shelter beds to continue the work of dealing with camping in the right-of-way, getting, getting, you know, if we need to close camps and move people. We, we do need the capacity, and, and this is part of that equation of getting more capacity into the shelter bed count so that we can do other initiatives throughout the city in terms of dealing with camps and things like that.
We're well, we're, we're well aware of the need for, you know, authorized, managed, appropriate places for people to go so that Huddle Road and other, you know, Huddle Road, 17th Street in Redmond, you know, places like that can be, can be cleared out.
But I'd say we wanna, we wanna turn the corner on, you know, unsanctioned camping. You know, as of, you know, defining, turning the corner, we still haven't even defined that. So, we're adding more resources. We have a wish, a goal, a hope strategy, but what does that mean? I mean, when do we say, okay, there's no more unsanctioned camping in the community? And then, as I say, what I've seen recently is, well, ODOT's right-of-way is their problem, and the city's streets are the city's problems. And it's, everybody's just kinda piecemealing this together still. And you see my frustration is we seem to have a coordinated homeless office, and it's, once again, we have an empty chair here, and I don't know what this means. It's like we're just onesy-twosies.
Well, I, I, I believe that when the Coordinated Homeless Response Office completes their strategic plan, which is their primary charge, facilities such as this will certainly be, you know, included as key strategies to, that will add up to a comprehensive approach to help us turn the dial on this, on this issue. I mean, facilities such as this are, what we need is places for people to get some support and services to get back on their feet. People who are ready to get back on their feet. You know, that's why we have things like six-month, you know, six-month stay limits, you know, and, and at Bethlehem Inn, you know, a six-week stay limit. It's a, it's a, it's a stepping stone. It's not a long-term strategy to warehouse people. And, and facilities such as this are going to help us move people out of homelessness.
Also, remember, there was a Emergency Homeless Task Force effort a couple of years ago, and a year later, we came back. We all sat around the tables with the city council, and we said, oh, we've put a draft plan together, and the plan is to not have people homeless someday. I mean, we just don't put any barriers or, or, or expectations on this whole thing. So, I don't know, you know, we're gonna add this. I'm not opposed to this, but do we need four more? Do we need six more? Are we gonna turn the corner someday? What does this look like? I still have no idea. So, just saying we're gonna add more resources is frustrating.
I don't, I don't like hearing that the Bethlehem Inn, which I think runs a lovely program, is half-empty in Redmond and a quarter-empty in Bend. You know, you would think people with children, families, would know that they need to get their children in a safer location where they have the surrounding support, and those kids can get back into school and things if that, it's, it's appropriate. So, I've done some research lately trying to figure out, okay, who's, who's making headway on these, on our homeless population that seems to be growing and growing? I heard from Colleen Sensky that she's, they've placed 44 people? 44 people into housing in the last year and a half, okay? Our village, our Veterans Village, has placed 12 people on into housing in the last year and a half. The Safe Parking Program in Redmond has worked with 22 people. They've placed six people, and yet, they still have 13 people in their program. But they are making, they're making progress. And the Safe Parking Program here in Bend, Megan Perkins, Councilor Perkins and I had a conversation this morning, and she said, Patty, they're doing, they're doing a really good job. So, we need to know what is really working, because if it's money, guys, you look at Portland. Money is not the answer. We have people that need more help. We need more drug rehab help. We need more mental health help. And housing first, if that was the answer, I think we probably would, could have solved the problem a long time ago. But there are serious issues here, and so, but for families, yes. I do believe that, you know, there are, there are, there are better options for them today, and somehow that needs to be, that engagement needs to be done with the families.
We absolutely need to pay attention to performance and accountability. I, I wanna express appreciation for this report about the Lighthouse Navigation Center, which includes statistics on people moving to permanent housing or non-permanent, stable housing situations, and also includes, includes statistics on people making progress on, on various activities, behaviors, actions to help them get out of homelessness. So, all, all of the, all of the facilities and organizations that Commissioner Adair mentioned, you know, are, are measuring progress, as, as is the City of Bend's programs. And, and so, you know, I just want us to, to recognize that we have, we have just been given the kinds of statistics that we are asking for. That, you know, if we are asking, like, how do we know we're making progress? How do we know this is actually helping to move people out of homelessness? We have, you know, we have, we have data right in front of us to, to help us understand that. And this Franklin Avenue Shelter is just another piece of the good work that the city of Bend, working with a number of service providers, has already been doing.
So, as I say, I support defining what it means to turn the corner so we don't have unsanctioned camping. You know, we're gonna provide, how many beds are at Franklin?
80.
Eighty people.
60, it's 50 rooms, but you're-
That's correct. Okay.
Okay.
The layout's very-
But, yeah, as I say, which is fine, it's great, we're adding more resources. But are we still working at trying to say, okay, as of some point, we're gonna have, you know, unsanctioned camping is not allowed and approved, and-
Yeah, I, I will say-
I know it's tricky, but-
It is very tricky, but I will say, you know, we are, we are anxiously wanting to get the Franklin Shelter open because that provides another tool in our toolbox to go deal, that opens up capacity in the shelters, which is, allows us to employ different tools in some of the unsanctioned camping areas that the city's currently talking about. This is that, that first big step that we need to get that bed capacity to a point where we can take kind of another level of kind of action and options with the unsanctioned camping on places like Huddle and what's going on in Juniper Ridge as well. So, that's, it is part of our overall strategy, and this is one of those main components that says we can do maybe something a little different than what we've been doing in the past because we just have not had the capacity.
And remember, we did have sent a, a letter to DLCD and the governor saying if there's flexibility at the perimeter of the city to be able to do more improvements, a place for people. As I say, I don't even wanna define it more than that, cause we'll figure out what that looks like. But, you know, I'm supportive of that, and we're supportive of that. We all wrote a letter. So, it's just interesting. We kinda put ourselves in a box, and we add some resources. We spend a lot of money, and then we hope, we hope it's gonna be better. It's just, how do we close the loop a little bit better?
Commissioner Adair, on our Safe Parking Programs, I do have that number, if you would like it for the city of Bend. There are six sites across the city. Most are in, with communities of faith. There are 55 people that have participated in the last 18 months, and 26 of those individuals have moved on to more permanent housing.
Right. Yeah, that's what Megan, she said it, you know, and that's why I was really hoping that you could expand that program.
We're working on it.
I know that Rick gives, Rick Russell in, let's see, what is it? It's a 90-day program. There are three months where they really try and surround people with access and, you know, the ability to move on to positivity with their life. So, and it sounds like you have that same program, if you could just have a little more energy to it.
We're working on that, absolutely.
Yeah. No, I mean, originally, no one even knew a couple of months ago when I first met with several other people. So, I just, you know, I think the more folks we can put on it, faith-based, does make a difference on a lot of occasions.
27 people moving through the City of Bend's Safe Parking Program to housing is, is a pretty good statistic. I mean, I mean, I, you know, I, I am a huge fan of the Safe Parking Program in Redmond, but there, there are not near 27 people moved through yet, so.
Did you say 26?
26.
26. So, that's 47%. That's almost half. I know Rick's program maybe hasn't, hasn't really been in effect for the year and a half, like the Fuse Program had. But I was just trying to, you know, see what is working, and if we can, you know, give those programs more attention, you know, such as our Veterans Village. They've had a couple of people that, you know, left the program. That's what happened with Safe Parking in Redmond. You know, you're not always successful, but for those people that we can help, you know, the sooner we help them, the better it is. Yes.
Well, one of the things, one of the key messages that I, I, I hope we're getting from all these examples of success is that we need a whole range of facilities, high barrier, low barrier, indoor, outdoor, safe parking, congregate shelter, non-congregate shelter, all of these things. We need, we need kind of like a continuum of different kinds of services and facilities because different things work for different people. So, you know, it's, it's, it's really important to recognize what is working, but it's also important to recognize what the gaps are. And I am hopeful that when the Coordinated Homeless Response Office produces its strategic plan, it will recognize that we need this, like a whole bunch of arrows in the quiver, not one, not one kind of approach to moving people out of homelessness because we have so many people who are in different life situations. You know, people end up homeless for many different reasons. We have all these different sub-populations, and they need different things to get out of homelessness, so.
There are a lot of those people that are, have been using drugs. The navigation report does mention illicit drug use. So, when you have that, you're dealing with that. It further complicates things, and then you have the mental illness. I know that Deschutes County Behavioral Health is right there trying to make that difference. But we needs, we need more of those focuses because it seems like other people are really pulling up. The people that are just there, they've lost a job, they're in between funding, and if we can get them that first month's rent in order to get into their next location, I think that's important.
So, I, I move approval of proposed rev revisions to the Homeless Solutions Partnership with the City of Bend.
I second it. Is it possible to get a copy of the document?
Of, I'm sorry?
The document, the contract with-
Yes. I, I have a couple of hard copies with-
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Yes.
So, we have a grant agreement there.
I believe the grant agreement was included in the meeting materials today.
The, the actual document with Shepherd's House is here?
No, not with Shepherd's House. We have, we have it, we don't have it yet.
Oh, you don't have it yet?
No, because we don't know what the funding structure will be. I do have a draft of what the budget would be, but until I came today and until we get the heads-up from the governor's office, we have not developed an operator contract.
Okay. All right.
I can bring you the navigation-
You believe that it's gonna be the-
I believe that it's going to be, it's going to be 1.2.
I believe for straight operations, based on that thirty-eight seventy, that it'll be just under, it comes out to eight forty-seven, five ten forty-five. And this is a huge draft, so I can, I can just hand it to you if you would like. But it breaks down the staffing, the security, supplies, and things like that.
And that's for one year of operations.
One year.
So it's been moved and seconded. Another question, how does the operator get selected?
We applied for the money through the MAC group to the governor's funds with Shepherd's House. So they were the named operator.
Shepherd's House is the partner that's at the table already. I'm just, I mean, whenever we do any contracting, we go through a huge, big process.
Yes.
And this just looks like it's very different then. Where it's just like Shepherd's House is our partner upfront. We'll get you as much money as we can and do the best work we can with those dollars.
We did go through a process with a request for qualifications, followed by an RFP process for shelter support services as well as navigation, which is how we selected Shepherd's House for NAV and for Central Oregon Villages for the temporary outdoor shelter. What it did was create a list from which we could pull from. This would most likely be a sole source finding on behalf of the city because it's the named partner when we...
Okay, so previous efforts is named this as the partner, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair, and Chair votes yes. So as I say, lots of deep discussions here. I'll acknowledge that I don't know, I mean, I don't know if this is a lot of money, and it's going to go, it's going to do good things. But, you know, when are we going to turn the corner on, you know, unsanctioned camping? And, you know, if we have a coordinated homeless office put a plan together, and we do it for another year, we come back and say, well, yeah, we started it for another year. It just gets really frustrating year after year, so. Let's see what we can do here.
All right, if we're going to talk about accountability, I'd like to ask you, do you know how many homeless people there were in Deschutes County the first year you were elected to office? Do you know how many homeless people there are in Deschutes County now?
You don't need to attack me here.
You know, you're talking about, like, when are we going to turn the corner? When are we going to make progress? You have been in office for twelve years. Homelessness has almost tripled in this county during that period. Who is responsible for that? Who could have done something about that during that twelve-year period? Okay, so like, if you're going to put on everybody else, when are you going to fix this? When are we going to turn the corner? Why don't you, why don't you turn a finger back towards yourself and ask yourself those questions? People, there are people in our community who are trying to get things done, who are trying to make a difference, who are trying to, you know, this is like a thousand points of light, right? There are people who are doing what they can, all sorts of initiatives, and basically asking them why they haven't solved the problem yet is not helping anything.
But the philosophy is very different here. We build a beautiful community. We build houses, we build roads, we build water, and we do infrastructure. We had a big COVID, you know, pandemic. Now we have a big drug problem. And we just let people show up and set up on the side of the road, and we're kind of polite about it. We're not going to incarcerate people. We're not putting the pressure on some folks. And then we're going to add more and more services. I'm just defining, what does it look like? How far do we have to go before we think we're turning a corner? I'm asking for the community at large. You're attacking me on this, and we see the world very differently, obviously.
We have built a beautiful...
But there's different views here.
We have built a beautiful community that has produced an inadequate amount of accessible housing for the people who have lived here for, in many cases, their entire life. And that is one of the major reasons why we have such a large homeless population.
So we have a land use system that locks people in and doesn't let us build on rural properties and add housing, and we stack people up and we overcharge for houses. There's a lot of moving parts here.
We have a pattern of development that has under-produced housing that is accessible to people who need to live on wages and salaries that they can earn in Deschutes County.
Could I...
That's what we have.
Could I break up this and just make a comment? Because I am working on housing, affordable housing in our community. And I heard a fascinating story two days ago from someone who did a mobile home park. They're doing it in Madras, something new. They had had one here in Deschutes County, they'd sold it. But what they found, they had a plan, seven acres, fifty-nine double wides. I mean, amazing. They were going to put in five street lamps. No, the regulations from the state of Oregon were such that they had to make, put in fourteen street lights, fourteen. It added their cost of a hundred thousand. Now, that isn't the way to go, and we're talking affordable housing. So I think there's a bigger problem here, and I think we have to look at all the costs that we add on to, you know, our development when we say, oh, no, you've got to do this and this, and this has got to be done this way. You know, those additional nine, you know, street lights are really, they're expensive. So, you know, it's always fascinating when you, when we think about one way. But here they were, they were doing something incredibly affordable, and they're hoping to come and do something now in Deschutes County. So looking for that project to help them with. But, yeah, that's what they found, and I just feel like there's, it's a bigger problem. You know, adding on costs to projects, and then the costs get passed on, and then that goes up to the house price. So anyway, I just wanted to break up the conversation this morning.
The costs of infrastructure are absolutely a challenge to adding housing, and particularly to adding housing that is going to be accessible and affordable to working people.
Well, that's what this, that's what this project was. Clearly, it's an affordable project, and, you know, it's a gated community. And I'm sure it's going to be a very nice community, but just to add another hundred thousand on top.
And things like street lights and streets and water and sewer cost money and have to be paid by somebody so that people are safe when they are traveling to and from their home, are sanitary when they are...
So then we have people falling right off into the woods, but we're going to hold on to some of those expectations. I mean, do we really need all roads paved? It's nice to do it. It's cool to be able to say, oh, we're going to build this beautiful neighborhood. Maybe we don't need paved roads. Maybe we just need housing for people.
Well, that is something that you have every opportunity to derive in your role as county commissioner as one of three decision-makers for the Deschutes County Roads Department. If you want Chris Doty to build less paved roads, you can have that discussion.
Thank you very much. We voted, and we've supported your request.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Amy and Russ.
Thank you.
Yes, that's...
Okay, do we have other items for today? Or any other items? And is there an executive session?
Oh, I do have good news. So we can have bipartisan support.
Oh, there we go.
If we go with the BLM side. Apparently, there's some more scientific research that has to be accomplished. But yes, did speak to Chief of Staff Congressman Benz, and, you know, they would, they would be there. So we will definitely have bipartisan if we can pass that initial testing, I guess I could say. And then on Friday, I do have, I finally have done it. I've had lunch with the governor's housing director. So I'm wondering if one of you can go be a participant at noon with the Behavioral Health Advisory Panel. It's from noon to like one on Friday, this Friday. Because I'm hopefully having lunch with Tyler in Salem. Of course, unless there's another blizzard.
Pretty sure I have a water or MPO. I think I have the MPO meeting.
Yeah, it looks like I can make that on Friday, though.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner DeBon. And I did speak to Chad this morning about it, so this is good.
Yeah, that's great news. And I'd like to say, when I discussed this with Chad and Tim yesterday, they were asking, well, what is the next step? And if we have support from all four members of our congressional delegation for Deschutes County, I think what we need to do is get all of their staffers together and have them kind of nod to each other, yes, we're all, you know, all of our offices are on board with this, and have them decide amongst them who's going to, who's going to draft the bill and move that through the process so that they can, you know, support each other through that. But, you know, somebody's got to step forward and, you know, and be the lead on this. So I don't know what the best way for us to ask them to convene that, that meeting of four staffs is. But, you know, I would like, I would like our, I would like our staff to sort of orchestrate that, and, you know, we can do the inviting or pushing with different congressional offices. But I think, I think they need to do that. They need to all get together, kind of nod heads, and then decide who's going to, who's going to work on the bill.
That's a great, yeah, great definition of what the next step is. I like it, so she's nodding over here, yep.
Well, we need to do the, they need to do that testing first. If they have to get permission for it, do that testing, which is, sounds fairly easy.
Just to check the rock and the soil, yeah.
Yes, and then, then we'll put it all together.
I mean, I think we could, we could move forward with that anyway because if that site doesn't pan out, then one of the other two site, two Bureau of Land Management sites that they were looking at might, might then kind of be a next best choice.
But, yeah, it's time to focus on those. It sounds like that's a good priority at this time. So, yeah, we all were involved with planning commission interviews yesterday, but another one on Monday, so the process isn't complete at this time. And then also, three o'clock today is the Senate Bill 644. So it's just a work session now. It sounds like there's no public hearing on the matter, but three o'clock, we can all watch, or whoever can watch, follow that. Also, Deschutes County 2040 in this meeting tonight. So the Comprehensive Plan Community Outreach Effort at six o'clock here. Okay, so anything else for this meeting? So at this time, we'll go to an executive session. This will be ORS 192662D Labor Negotiations. So we'll switch gears on Zoom.